Okay, it's recording.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. My apologies to the meeting. Darn it.
Okay, well, it is what it is. We've got minutes. It's too bad about this presentation because I think a lot of people would have been interested, but maybe we can find a different way of unpacking it for the public. Okay, so back to this. I was in the middle of discussing site dependency. And, you know, we're gonna have to have a serious discussion about where we might propose to do this. There are options. We have discussed them within the subcommittee and amongst various members of the larger committee. And I believe the city has been having discussions as well because we still have B C Housing wanting to do something. And so sites have been a point of discussion all the way along with regard to the city's involvement. Discussions about site are gonna end up having to be off camera or in camera. We're gonna have to discuss those privately because just because of property owner considerations and privacy and so on. So, you know, typically any matters concerning property go in camera. We're not gonna do that today, but I'm putting it out there that that's going to be an important part of this discussion should we choose to move forward. In addition, I need to bring something else to your attention. What we've done here is we've had a lot of discussion and compared the different elements between these programs. That's great. It gives everybody more of an insight as to what a campus of care might look like. Ultimately, however, we've got the real world and we have got B C Housing that wants to do something here. They've already put something on the table. And we're all aware of what that looks like. We don't know where it might be if it happens. But we know they want to do something. They've been three years now discussing this. We've got B C Housing saying that they want a commitment from the city of Grand Forks. They've heard about the concerns and they basically opened a window here or a door, I should say, for us to put something on the table. In other words, we've had an opportunity to get creative. We've had a verbal commitment from them that they are willing to listen and that they are willing to entertain the vision that the city of Grand Forks might come up with. Now, I keep saying the city of Grand Forks because at this point, I'm going to suggest that we have to hand this over to the city. It's going to be up to the city to bring a formal proposal to B C Housing should they choose to adopt and embrace the idea of a campus of care. We can't reasonably task the Social Services Advisory Committee with developing a formal plan, which is a huge job, without a commitment from the city that they are willing to carry it forward and put it on the table for B C Housing to consider. Add to that the fact that B C Housing will need somewhere to do this. Again, site consideration comes into play. In other words, the city is going to have to not only give B C Housing a concrete vision of a model that they would like to implement, but they're going to have to tell them where they're prepared to do it. So, I'm going to say that the work of this subcommittee is over. We have fulfilled our task. We have compared, we've contrasted. We've done our best to bring that forward to the A G. What I'm going to suggest is that the A G now think about possible ways to bring this back to the city of Grand Forks. We do have two members at the table from the city that represent city government. And they might have an idea here. Ultimately, what we've done as our regular protocol would be to have the A G put forward a motion to the city of Grand Forks. I have prepared a very basic motion. But I think at this point, I'm gonna call my presentation finished and turn this back over to the chair for discussion. And perhaps the table will decide on a motion to bring forward to council at this point. So, thank you and thanks to my committee fellow subcommittee members. It's been a bit of a journey. And I hope everybody's satisfied with what you've seen today. And lastly, if I can do anything to answer any additional questions, I'd be happy to.
Well, thank you, John. That was a very comprehensive and excellent report. Very much appreciated. One question I have, and I don't know necessarily that you're going to be able to answer it. And maybe I'm just having a seniors moment, but has anybody discussed with the persons that we are trying to help? What they want?
You know, I'm glad you asked that because we've had a very interesting discussion along the way in the subcommittee because, you know, we've got a broad range of experience, life experience at the table. I want to turn that question over to Tammy because that's one of the points that she kept bringing up. I want to, before I do that, also say that in my conversations with Darren, Darren keeps kindly reminding me that we have a Charter of Rights. And we can't force anyone to take part in a campus of care program. Is a campus of care going to cure all our woes, our perceived woes? Probably not. It needs to be, there needs to be an element where it's inviting for the clientele. But that's all I'm gonna say. I'm gonna ask Tammy to expound on that.
Sure, thank you, Jen. First off, great, great report. I think you hit on everything that needed to be hit on.
Thank you.
Secondly, yeah, I very much buy into the nothing about you without you piece where we should in the planning stages always have somebody at the table who has lived experience. Somebody at the table for, to represent the cultures that may be involved. We have a high number of indigenous people on the streets. And so I don't think we should do any planning without somebody from the indigenous community to assist with with how that would best move forward and how that would be trauma-informed and laid out. In any case, I've had conversations with people with lived experience, but I can only answer for the people I spoke to. You know, if there's several people on the street, everyone's gonna have a different need and a different story and a different desire. And that's why Jen had mentioned there was quite a lot of discussion around the steps continuum. And that was, that was because the goal-setting piece is the goal set by the community for the people that are in residence. Or are the goals set by the residents themselves for things they want to do in their own lives? And we're at the end of a long meeting, so we didn't get to flesh it out very well, but you know, a person, a person who gets to contribute to their own solution has a stronger solution. And I like to put it this way, you know, if you take your own Band-Aid off, it's a lot less painful than if somebody else takes your Band-Aid off, you know? And so, yeah, I think that at the subcommittee stage, it was fine to have discussions without somebody with lived experience, but I think moving into any kind of formation of what we should do, we should definitely have people with either prior lived experience or current lived experience. And we should definitely have people who are culturally appropriate. So, that's all I have. And thank you for asking, Christine.
You're welcome. Darren, I'm gonna ask you if you or your staff have had any discussions with the people at the shelter with respect to other than a warm bed at night, what they might be looking for?
I think it's the same counselor Thompson as what Tammy said. There's no one answer. I think there's a wide variety of answers. So, that's about all I'm gonna say about that.
Okay, no, that's fine. Sorry.
Sorry, I just want to say one thing, Darren. I've been struggling with your video here. I'm having a hell of a time. I apologize. I can't get it back on.
I've got a face for radio. It's all good. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
So, are there any other questions or comments from the board with respect to John's report? Well, again, thank you to you and your committee. That was a lot of hard work and much appreciated. Also, I would ask, please, if you would email your comparison document that we discussed so that we could have a look at it as well?
Yes, I'll commit to that. And I think what I'd like to do, Christine, in consideration of the glitch we had with the recording, I know there's people that wanted to watch this meeting after the fact, just to get more detail on it. So, maybe I'll try and work something out with Chris where I just kind of redo it without questions. So, we do a separate quick recording somehow so we can make that available to the public. And I'm thinking in particular, other city counselors as this moves forward.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. Chair, I will work for John to get that as well as the PDF of the document, both to the members of the table, council, and eventually the public. And thanks, John. My bad about not pushing the button.
No worries.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, the next item of old business is
Christine, sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but I was hoping the discussion would move to one point that I made earlier. So, I'm just gonna bring it up if I could before we leave this topic.
Absolutely.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, one of the important things is that this gets handed off to council. The A G just can't go forward and develop a plan at this point without some details in place, particularly with regard to site and overall commitment by council. I guess my question to the chair and to Counselor Moslin would be around the idea of whether or not the representatives at the table from the city of Grand Forks would be prepared to take a motion to counselor, to council at this point in time to see if council is ready and able to take this on insofar as developing a formal plan. Now, the way I see this playing out is that obviously council is, you know, are the ones that have got to present such a plan. But it would be unrealistic of the A G to expect council to develop it on their own. But I guess what I'm saying is that before we look at the different organizations represented at this table to develop such a plan, we need a commitment from council. So, are you guys prepared to take this to council at this point in time, knowing what you know, with the intent of getting a solid commitment from council to move forward and take this to B C Housing?
I don't have an issue with that. I would need to see the resolution. And if I heard you correctly, I thought you said you sent a proposal to the Attorney General.
No, no.
No?
No, no, no. No, we've had nothing to do with the Attorney General. That must, no, that's no. But what I do, what I did say, Christine, is that I have just quickly jotted down a rough motion that might serve as a starting point for something that we could take away today. But I think that would probably involve some discussion. And like I say, you know, I think we're at a place where we have to, you know, we have to pin council down on whether or not they want to commit to a campus of care.
John, if I might, my two cents worth here.
Yeah.
Really, it's up to the advisory group to move this forward. So, it should be a motion of the move that the advisory group recommends the campus of care analysis to city council and that it be part of their negotiations with B C Housing.
Yes, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, so that's a decision. And, you know, both my, I'll speak for myself. I'm really pleased and relieved to see your comparison chart because I've always wanted to know what was it we were trying to put on the table. And now I have a clear idea of that. And I, but I cannot, nor can Christine guarantee what, you know, the majority of council is gonna do.
Of course.
As council's liaison to this committee, we would certainly take that motion forward. And you can rest assured that I'm pretty sure council will be watching the meeting as well as the minutes, as well as your PDF document. So, yeah, I know you guys have pushed it forward to council and will certainly be talking about some of the some of what the campus of care puts on the table. And, but I, you know, can't guarantee any of the results with B C Housing. Okay, I don't know how much more assurance I can give the table other than that. Anyhow, that's my response, Chair. Thanks for your time. I see Tammy's got her hand up.
Yes, Tammy. Muted, Tammy.
Jen, you said you had a roughed-out motion. Are you willing to bring that forward?
Yes, with a preamble. The intent here, Chris, just to explain the rationale, is that any further work on a formal plan is gonna be a lot of work and a big commitment on the part of the people engaged in fleshing out the details. And it's gonna have to be a detailed articulated plan in order for B C Housing to consider it. They need to know what they might be getting into. Not to mention that such a plan would involve establishing a partnership between Interior Health and B C Housing to a degree, depending on the number and level of services that are shared on the site. So, given that, that's the rationale. We don't want to do a whole pile of work. This is gonna take months and many, many, many hours of planning to put such a plan together. And we don't want to do it. I shouldn't say we don't want to do it. I'm, I guess I'm speaking from the perspective of the present subcommittee. And I would hope that we have a broader representation at a planning table than just what we had on the subcommittee. So, you know, given that, I think that it's only fair that at this point, we ask the city for some sort of solid commitment that they're going to move forward. That would come in the form of a motion. I have a motion prepared. It's nothing fancy. Okay.
Are you putting this on the floor, John?
I'll put it on the table right now. Yep, you betcha.
Can't act. Kristen, I can't take anything forward to council without a resolution from this table.
Exactly. And I will put the motion out there, but I suspect that it might be subject to considerable debate. That said, that the G F S S A G recommend to the city of Grand Forks to formally endorse the campus of care model and move forward with the development of a formal proposal to B C Housing.
Is there a second to that motion? Kathy Hutton seconds it? Is there discussion, please? I don't see anybody raising hands. So then I will call, oh, Counselor Moslin.
Karen, I'm trying to catch up. I'm glad we got it. The record button is going.
I'll repeat it, Chris.
Who did, the mover is John. Who is, who was the second?
Kathy Hutton.
Okay, thank you. And here, John, if I might, Chair, repeat it.
Yes, please.
Move that the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group recommended to the city of Grand Forks.
To endorse?
Endorse the campus of care model to move forward with it with B C Housing. Can I get that?
Not quite.
Okay.
And to move forward with the development of a formal proposal to B C Housing.
Okay.
John, I'd suggest maybe if you wanted to email that resolution to Chris, then he's got it and he can put it in the minute.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, John.
No, that's okay. I would hope that we have some thoughts from the players here on this. In particular, I'm hoping that we'll hear from boundary families because obviously a commitment to a model like this would also require a great deal of energy from boundary families. And so, my own feeling is, is that I would like this table to feel confident that everybody's 100% on board.
Darren?
So, at this point, Counselor Thompson, I won't commit my agency to anything other than supporting the exploration of this moving forward.
Thank you. Tammy, you're unmuted. Did you have something you wanted to comment on?
I just wanted to clarify if that motion makes the campus of care the only model that can be explored.
I could speak to that.
Yeah, please.
The motion is not about consideration. You had mentioned to be considered. The city has been considering what B C Housing has presently got on the table for a long time. This is now what is perceived as something that might be more palatable to the city and that the city would get behind and negotiate with B C Housing on. But I have to be clear and say that the reason I bring this to the city is that B C Housing has made it clear that anything at all has got to come from the city. This committee, we can, we can recommend whatever we want. But ultimately, it is the city that is dealing with B C Housing. So, we need a level of commitment there. So, that's, that's the design of the motion, Tammy.
Thank you for the clarification.
Hey, I'm gonna go around the board or see if anyone has comments. Kathy, do you have any comments on this resolution? I can't hear you.
Just one minute.
Still muted.
Okay. I think it's a good motion. Yes, that's the only thing I have to comment on.
Okay, thank you. Juliana? You're muted?
That was a very good presentation and I appreciate it. What I understand, my issue is with the site. The city cannot find suitable site or senior center. Now, I believe senior center should be first. So, this campus of care model come afterward. There's a suitable site to be given to the seniors. And I mean, apologize if that's a little I, you know, as an advocate for the seniors, we're trying to get a senior center. And that's the only issue I have with this. Is that we've been told from the senior center that there is no suitable site or a senior center. So, the city would be willing to give the land for. So, you know, if they turn around and give land for campus of care model, unless the senior center was incorporated into that in some aspect, I wouldn't be able to support that. I'm sorry.
That's fine. John, you wanted to respond to that? John? You're muted?
Yeah. Yes, I would. Yes, I totally appreciate your perspective, Juliana. I get it. One thing to consider with the campus of care is that B C Housing presently already owns a lot in Grand Forks. That's at the corner of Second and Central. And I think I anticipate that part of what might enter into the discussion here is what's already been part of the discussion between council and B C Housing is a land swap where council puts an alternate on the table. Swapping, of course, suggests that they would get back the Second Street lot in exchange. Please, Chris and Christine, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Well, I'll say that Second Street, from my perspective, is not the appropriate location for a supportive housing. But we're, I hear what you're saying, Juliana, but we are dealing with another issue and not that the seniors, a location for the seniors is certainly not off the table. It's something that's also being looked at as well. So, Ally, I'm gonna ask if you have any comments on the proposed resolution?
A note just that I support it. John, you did a great job presenting and thanks to the committee for taking this on.
And Anne, do you have any comments?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, John. That was well done. I think the only thing that I would like to say is a cautionary note. And that's that the community supports this concept of a campus of care. And because I think the loudest words we hear are that nothing's changing, nothing is getting better, it's still getting worse. We need to actually have four pillars of support and help people get out of where they're at and get them to where they would like to be. But on the other hand, we are a small community. And I do not believe that the community will stand up and applaud this if it turns out to be, you know, 50 to 100 beds coming from all over B C. And I'm, you know, don't shoot the messenger. I'm just telling you how the community feels.
Thank you. Xena, do you have any comments? Well, if you're muted, Xena, if you're saying.
Hi, yeah, no, I support the motion for sure.
Thank you. And Melissa, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you. It was really nice to see the comparison. It was nice to really kind of line them up. Yeah, thank you. It was really nice to see the comparison. It was nice to really kind of line them up and see what we're talking about. And I was really surprised to see how many similarities there are where it really mattered. So really appreciate being able to compare them that way. Thank you again for all that work. I probably, just with the way that the motion's been worded, I worry that if it's, if it's basically campus of care or nothing, and I don't think that I agree with that. I would like to see services in place sooner than later, and I'd love to see us aspiring towards better solutions always. So while I do appreciate and agree, the campus of care model looks really great. I would be more than fine with a supportive housing model in lieu of, in the meantime, because really, we it's nice, it's nice to have the best options, but really, we we need housing and we needed it before the flood. So I would hate to get in the way of any options that could come and support our community in the meantime.
Thank you. Just a comment and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My interpretation is that this is a proposal that we're recommending to council as a whole for their consideration to propose it. We're not saying that this is the one and only, but would they consider an option such as the campus of care? I got that correct?
Yes, I I think in essence you do, Christine. I think this comes out of a perception that council has responded to what they believe is community perception and has been resistant to what BC Housing has presently put on the table. Now, granted, that is constantly evolving and there has been, from what I understand, some movement. But what we've heard repeatedly and where this came from and how our committee got involved was largely through, this is going on a couple of years of discussion now. The the perception that council, as well as the community, feel that they wanted to see wrap around, a wraparound support model included with what BC Housing had on the table, that nobody felt very good about a single pillar of support that being the present model that provides housing. Now granted, there are services available in our town. And, you know, those services are available but not on site. So given that, this is what we kind of identified as as being what a wraparound model would look like. That said, I guess it's all based on the belief that council has been asking for something similar to this, as has the community. Therefore, it's more palatable and perhaps that generates the opportunity for council to go to BC Housing and finally say, this is what we want. Here's what we're going to put on the table.
Okay, well, I can't guarantee that council's going to you know, we're gonna get that agreement from council.
Of course.
But it's certainly something that I would, I would be comfortable in saying that we ask if they would consider such an option. But anyway, that that's gonna be up to councils to how, how, if and how we're going to deal with this, but I'm certainly prepared. I'm sure Councilor Moslem is too, is to to carry this forward to council. And maybe we're probably too late to get it on the agenda for the next regular meeting, but maybe we could add it as a late item if if necessary. So if we can get that information from you and Chris sooner rather than later, that would be good. Okay, so anybody else have anything they want to say? Not hearing anything.
Tammy here, I would support the motion as long as it is not at the exclusion of of supportive housing.
Well, we're just, okay, John? John?
Yeah, I I I hear you, Tammy, and I think, you know, I think we're living with the reality that Grand Forks is gonna end up with something. BC Housing has made that patently clear. I think the the way I've interpreted it, and I I could be wrong, but the the way I've interpreted the whole evolution of this is that what BC Housing has recognized that that there's not a strong level of support for what they presently have on the table. And so what I interpret this as is that they've said, look, we're gonna do something whether you like it or not. We're giving you flexibility as to where it might be. Give us some alternatives. We're open to the discussion as to what additional supports you might like to see included. We'll listen to you. So this is us seizing the opportunity, but I I don't think that there's a worry that Grand Forks is gonna end up having nothing as a result of aspiring towards this particular goal.
Well, I'm just going to comment that I don't want Grand Forks on the news like Penticton is. So having said that, I'm going to ask and call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented. Okay. Opposed? And you'll, those that, okay, Juliana, support you about that recorded, Juliana? Yep. Yes, okay. And Allie and Darren and, oh, no, Darren, I got I'm going to say the motion has been carried. I don't hear any opposition. Oh, Melissa, I'm sorry. You've got your hand raised.
Yes, I'm in opposition. Thank you.
Well, you're in opposition as well. Do you want that recorded as well?
Only if it needs to be. It doesn't matter either way. I don't mind.
Uh, anybody else? I don't see any hands. Okay, so I am going to declare the motion adopted as 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 recorded. Okay. So the next item of business, and I, we've got 27 minutes is the terms of reference from the Whispers of Hope. And if everybody has read the, this was brought up at the last meeting. And they were recommendations to the terms of references suggested by Tammy. So I'm not sure how the membership wants to deal with this. Oh, Kathy, I recognize you. Are you muted?
And now I'm not muted.
No, you're not.
Okay. I just have a question about these proposed terms of reference changes. It's not clear to me whether this is in addition to our terms of reference or replacing the terms of reference under those headings. I'm not clear.
No. John, I recognize you.
Thank you. You know, I've also had a a look at it and this is partially in response to Kathy's question. When I really had a chance to go over this, I see this as as being kind of twofold. A lot of what's contained in the document, I would say falls appropriately into the category of fitting into a a code of conduct. Now, we did have a an agenda item that was carried over from meeting to meeting for quite a while when Darren was still the chair, which was the idea of opening up a discussion about a code of conduct. So what I see here is, in part, an amendment to the terms of reference and in part code of conduct, maybe the majority of it code of conduct. So what I'd like to suggest is this, is that we did strike a subcommittee way back in the end of October that dealt with the terms of reference. We picked away at it for two months and reported back to the meeting once and then reported back with a final draft. And within the final draft, which was carried by the committee, was the provision for an annual review. Now, what I see here is that and that's not to trivialize what's in the document, but I don't see anything within the document that affects the functionality of this committee in the interim. So what I I would like to suggest is that we simply and respectfully put this on the table for the next annual review. And that if there is still an appetite for a code of conduct, that that be subcommitted and that subcommittee look at developing an actual code of conduct, which would be a separate document. That way, the terms of reference could reference the code of conduct without having all of that in the terms of reference. And there might be one line in the terms of reference that says something like all members are expected to adhere to the code of conduct. And then that would be a separate document within our mandate or constitution. So that's what I'm going to suggest. I don't know that it needs a formal motion. But I'm gonna suggest that we just table anything to do with the terms of reference for the annual review. And that if there's a desire to develop a formal code of conduct, which I've I've heard that before, so I'm gonna suggest that maybe someone wants to make a motion that that be become the work of a subcommittee and that they work on developing that document apart from the terms of reference and that we simply make a create a one liner within the terms of reference that says all members shall adhere to the code of conduct. That's my suggestion.
So are you, are you putting a resolution on the table?
If the chair feels that you would, if you would like to see one, I will, yes.
Yeah, I think that that way we give direction. It's in the minutes, it's recorded. And the yeas are nays.
Okay.
So.
Okay, well, I will refer to this as the item from Whispers of Hope then. So moved that the proposed amendment from Whispers of Hope to the terms of reference be tabled until the annual review. I'll make two separate motions.
Okay. Is there a second or for John's? Kate, Juliana seconds that discussion? Tammy?
I can't support this motion because the things that are included in this document that Melissa was asked to to bring to our table are things that need to be in place and functioning in the now. For those of us that are active on social media, we do represent this group. And so, you know, when I'm, when I'm on social media or downtown in the public or talking to people I know, I I do represent this group and I do need to adhere to some of these things in the document in order to properly represent this group. And I think that needs to happen now and not several months from now. So I can't support this resolution.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, John.
I was prepared to put two motions on the table, the other being with regard to some subcommittee work with regard to a code of conduct. I could incorporate it into the original motion. I thought it would be just expedite it to do two separate motions.
Okay. Oh, Councilor Moslem.
Chair, I just like to comment, I I'm not too sure what the restrictions were the Whispers of Hope for bringing these suggestions forward. I'm a little frustrated, you know, I, the suggestions are are quite, in many ways, quite reasonable, several of which I find already in place. And and as I, I do know, I agree with John. I'm not too sure the the functionality of the group will change much because of this. Nonetheless, you know, we did, a subcommittee, three of us, John, myself, Juliana, did work to through several meetings in November, December, and even into January to get a terms of reference to the group. It was. You know, I don't mind it being thought of as a living document because it, you know, people come, people go. Different types of decisions. So, you know, I'm, I'm I'm not in a, I I'm not in a rush to dismiss these suggestions. So I I I find that tabling them to the next annual review might be putting them off. You know, I I do not see them as a substantive change to the terms of reference in many ways. Other than the notice that the, but that a new rule, the advisory secretary i- is is there. And that's, of course, is what I'm trying to do anyways. Anyways, I, you know, so I I guess I'm kind of speaking against the motion to to tape, was, I think it was to table or to refer.
Till the next annual review.
Annual review, the intent is putting it off till the November, I believe, somewhere in there. You know, I don't mind taking another look at it. So, you know, I I I just don't think there'd be a significant change. What it would be is a, might be significant is the expense of time. Putting the terms of reference back together again and putting it back to the group. Might be other business attention to the group. Sorry, those, those were kind of mumble muttered, mumbled thoughts, Chair.
But what I'm hearing from from what John is saying is that, in his opinion, and having reviewed it, I I don't, I can't disagree that there are, there should be two documents. There should be the terms of reference. And I understand that there may be some things in this that could be deferred until the annual review. But that a subcommittee be struck to review this document and to develop a code of reference. Pardon me, a code of conduct, which could also be a living document and not incorporating everything into one, because things change. So quite frankly, I would support and I can't vote because I'm the chair, but I would support having two documents. And so that they're not muddied. And no disrespect to all the work that Melissa put into it. I I think she's, she worked long and hard on it. And I would be interested to ask her, Melissa, if she would have an issue if there were some things that were deferred to the next review of the terms of reference and things that should be included in a code of conduct being developed as a second document, code of conduct. So Melissa, can I, can I ask you to comment on this?
Yes. Well, first, in response to, I think it was Kathy's question, this is all in addition to the terms of reference. So and I I really mean no disrespect to the subcommittee that that worked over that time and presented. It's just that when it was presented to the group and it was mentioned, very little was changed and I I could see that. And meanwhile, there were things that we had all commented on or agreed upon that I thought could be included in the terms of reference. So what all I really did is I went through virtually all of our communications, all past minutes and emails and anywhere that we had either formally or informally agreed on a process or had defined what a position was doing. I I just really wrote that down so that it was concrete and it was included in the terms of reference. I'm really not trying to throw any loops into the system or anything, just trying to make sure we're all on the same page. And I did label it. So if if, for example, the advisory group conduct section And I did label it. So if, if, for example, the advisory group conduct section, that I did mention that that we'd kind of discussed code of conduct. We were leery to really get into it. People had expressed wanting to do it in person. But of course, the pandemic dragged on, so that might be harder to do than than we thought. But yeah, it's up to the group. I really, I did this because I felt that we had already done the work to say that this should be included. And I had just kind of brought it all into one place. So I I feel like it's a little unnecessary to keep deferring it. And I don't know about you, you guys must love work and meetings because I mean, really to hash these things out over and over, over multiple times. I'm sorry, but that does not sound fun.
And I hear what you're saying, Melissa. And but but by the same token, if we, if we had a subcommittee that could review this document and pull out those that should be in a code of conduct, that can be done sooner rather than later.
Well, I've pulled them out already. So there is just a section with four points that is advisory group conduct. So that would, that in itself would be part of a code of conduct. So if you wanted, if you, if that was where people felt most uncomfortable, then perhaps that part could be left out and the rest could be agreed upon. Either way, I really don't take it personally. I just, I just took the time because I thought people would use it. That's all.
No, and I appreciate that. John, did you have anything you wanted to say in this regard?
No, I was, you know, Melissa's comment about people loving meetings. I think my, my motion is is actually rooted in the idea of saving this committee a lot of unnecessary work and debate during regular meeting time. And and like we had a subcommittee, we had two months for people to get suggestions in. We, we tweaked and edited and tweaked and edited and went back and forth and brought it to the full committee for approval and it was carried. And, you know, now we're looking at amendments and really, I, I think the amendments should have been into the subcommittee when the subcommittee was working on it because it just, it creates that much more work. So no, we, we don't like work. We don't want any more work. And that's why, part of the reason why I've got the motion on the table. The code of conduct, I think, is going to be a bit odorous. I think there's going to be debate. And, you know, I just as soon see that, that's just my suggestion. I just as soon see a lot of that taken care of in subcommittee and then brought back to the table for approval and and maybe there's going to be some debate still, who knows? So, you know, that, that's the rationale behind this motion. I can with withdraw the motion and we can debate it. You know, as it stands as potential amendments, but it's really cumbersome work. You know, just to explain how it worked. You know, we had Mr. Moslin sitting diligently maintaining a word document and we had Juliana and myself handing in edits in different colors of ink and striking out and sending back and forth and finally ending up with the final wording and bringing it back to the table, which was the time to have this discussion. And here we are. So I see it taking on much the same form. Those items that we're looking at right now, going back and forth several times and ending up back on the table for approval because any amendment has to be approved by the full committee. So that's the rationale behind my motion. I'm, I'm actually trying to save work and if the code of conduct is viewed as a priority at this point in time, well, then deal with it separately and make one, a one line amendment in the terms of reference that says all members of the GFSSAG must abide or adhere to the code of conduct. And then there is the code of conduct to refer to. So that's, that's my rationale there.
Okay, thank you. Now, time, time is 10 to 3. We do have a couple of other items of business. Is there anybody else that wants to say something with respect to John's motion? I'm going to quickly go around. Ally, have you spoken to that? I don't think.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, Ann Palmer?
Could, could John please reiterate it again? It's been a while.
Oh, God, I can hardly remember it. Okay, it was, it was basically a motion to defer any of the items with regard to the term, any proposed amendments from whispers with regard to the actual terms of reference to the annual review. And for, and then I was going to introduce another motion or we could couple it with this one to any work to do with a code of conduct to be done by a subcommittee.
Okay, I'm perfectly fine with your initial motion. I certainly have some issues about the code of conduct.
Thank you. Darren, do you have anything to say?
Not at this time, Counselor Thompson. Thanks for asking.
Counselor Moss, and you had your hand raised.
So the, the intent then, John, this is, as soon as the meeting disposes of this motion, you're going to put another motion. And if we could get a quick glimpse of that motion is basically would be to strike a subcommittee to consider a code of, the development of a code of conduct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, now I'm going to call that again because I didn't see or hear. All those in favor of John's motion? Okay, one. John, two, three, four. And all of those opposed? Okay, Ann, I don't know if you're for or against, so I'm going to call the motion passed.
Thor, I had my hand up.
Boy. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't see. The motion has passed.
Okay, then quickly, I'll introduce the second motion. That a subcommittee be struck to design and develop a code of conduct.
Is there a second for that motion? Juliana? Discussion? Anybody have questions? Hearing that, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? John?
No, no, that was in favor.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to declare the motion passed. New business is update on the temporary use permits for the shelter. And I will just give a quick update in that regard. Under the contract or that, or the terms of the use permit, Bodhi Family Services and B C Housing have exercised their right to extend that shelter until April the 15th. By resolution of council, it was approved that the extension continued to May 3rd, 2021. And consideration of any extension request to May of 2022 or will, will be dealt with after, hopefully, we we get the survey out. So, Councilor Moss, do you have anything to add to that or have I kind of?
Yep, thank you, Chair. I guess that basically what the intent here is to, was to, and I know the clock is late, you know, I didn't when this agenda was developed, I didn't know the extent of the campus of care presentation. And I don't want to rush the meeting, but basically the bottom line is B C Housing wants to establish a year round shelter at least until a new building can be built. They have made that very clear. They certainly illustrated that in the case of Penn Tecton. Keeping that shelter open. And I guess, I guess, having looked at that, we can see that, you know, there is a request to counsel to extend it to May 22nd. So the bottom line is, which I really wanted to sound out. And I know it might not be unanimous or whatever, but is there, does this committee see the need? Would an all year round shelter benefit the community? I think I got that out. I just wanted to point, ask the committee that question in their opinion. Would an all year round shelter benefit the community? Thank you.
I would speak to that.
Well, I was just going to ask if we could have a resolution to extend the time of the meeting. Because it's 2:57, we've got another item to deal with. And we've only got three minutes.
I would put that on the table. I move that we extend the time of the meeting for 15 minutes.
To 3:15? Thank you. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so you wanted to, Tammy, you wanted to speak to Counselor Moss's comments.
Yeah, his question was whether or not it would be a benefit to our community. I speak from my perspective and not for the whole community, but I do believe it would be a benefit to our community when people have somewhere to belong. They typically spend time where they belong and not in the parks and not in people's backyards and and not just wandering, keeping themselves busy. I also see a huge stability that that comes about in the lives of the people accepting services when they have somewhere to be and somewhere to connect in. And that stability resonates out to the rest of our community. So I would be absolutely in favor of the shelter remaining open until we have something in place for people to move into. So much so that I'd be happy to put a motion onto the table to that effect.
If you so wish.
I, I move that we, as the Grand Fork Social Services Advisory Committee, advise the city to positively on, on keeping a year round shelter.
Okay, may I have a second for that motion, please? I don't see here, hear anyone raising their hands.
Ally.
Ally Dixon, Dixon, you seconded it, Ally? Okay. Further discussion, I'm going to go quickly around the table. John, do you have any comments? You're muted, John.
It's a big issue. You know, I can't help but look at autonomy as being a great concern here. And when I say autonomy, I mean the autonomy of our city council over the I have to find appropriate language here over the, the request of the former attorney general. With that in regard, this is a very difficult question for me because I do recognize that there might be benefits. I, however, sit at this table in part as a representative of the community. And the community was given the terms of what I view a contract in the fall for an emergency cold weather's shelter. And I should maybe as opposed to community should reference the neighborhood. The neighborhood was given bookends on that. And I'm, I'm feeling that I, I can't, I, I can't in good faith vote in favor of this motion without knowing that the neighborhood has been involved in the decision. And I'm not seeing that at this point in time. So therefore, based on that, I'm, I'm going to have to say, no, I can't support the motion at this point in time. I think the attorney, I keep saying attorney general, the, the director of B C Housing or of housing in B C needs to needs to sweeten the pot here, I guess, to use layman's language. They need to sell this to the neighbors. They need to sell this to council. Otherwise, to have this, well, have council decide this independently and have that decision guide the process, great, we'll see how they vote. But to have in the same breath the threat of being overruled by the province, then I'm, I'm very skeptical and and I can't in good faith support it.
I just wanted to advise that, that, that the extension would go through the normal process of advertising and of advising the neighborhood of, of this request. It would not be just done willy nilly. It would have to go through the whole process again. So.
Can I ask a question, Christine, with regard to that? Are we talking what radius of the shelter? Because the last one, there was an assurance that the neighborhood was going to be consulted and to my understanding, I, I believe I'm correct, but please correct me if I'm not. That it actually wasn't a whole lot of neighbors that were involved in the consultation and, and like I say, that you know, given process, I, like, I think it's, I'm, you know, I'm a Democrat. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of council making decisions that they feel are in the best interest of this community and prepared to live with those decisions. But, you know, we need to see process. We need to see neighborhood involvement. Because I view this as the terms of a contract being changed.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying, John, and not to interrupt.
Yep.
But the bylaw, and this is what, what happened in the first temporary use permit application, provides that residents within 30, I think, 30 meters. That is far too small. I don't disagree with you. And I would like everyone to know that that does not preclude council from saying if, if this were to proceed to the, through the process to extend that notification area.
Just got a message, someone's in the waiting room.
Oh, okay. Oh, Melissa, I guess she left. Okay, I've got it.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yep, I've got it.
That's fine. So, so that does not preclude council from advising our staff if this were to go ahead. That we want the area extended to whatever. So, so just I hope that that answers that question, John, and and allows your concern there. I'm going to move on now to Juliana.
But it's a huge issue. And I don't have a lot of experience with it. Everything John has said, I agree with. I think, yes, consider the entire community as a whole and the people that are living there now. Cold weather shelter, absolutely, we need, we need year round. I disagree with that. Anyway, that's how I, yep.
Tammy, I think you've already commented, have you not?
Yeah, I, I did. And but I also wonder, do we have a quorum with the amount of people we have at the meeting now? And if we don't, should we defer this to the next meeting?
Gosh, that's a good question, but what's the quorum here?
I'm looking, Chair, sorry.
We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And and Madam Chair, if I may, I will recuse myself from this, as there is a conflict of interest, as my agency is the contractor on this.
Absolutely, I I understand perfectly.
So that removes Darren from the pool for counting the quorum.
That's eight.
Yes, I count eight. Uh what? I guess, Chris, you have to go to your membership list and take account on the agenda.
Oh, yeah. Uh. Yeah, sorry, John, I was just try- trying to find in the terms of reference, what is the quorum?
Well, we haven't, if, we have no quorum defined in the terms of reference, but we did agree to go go with Robert's rules, so. Within Robert's rules, I'm just cross checking here, there is a formula and and I've I've forgotten what. The magic number is.
Well, I count twenty two members on the, on the list, and we've got eight.
I don't think that's a quorum, but I will cross check if you just give me a minute.
Would would it be appropriate of at the, with that time? And with the provision of a quorum that we referred this to the next meeting? Yeah, of the, of the, uh of the social services group, that way I can put the motion on the agenda. And uh people can prepare a little bit, I feel a little bit badly about this, because I did end up kind of springing it on. Uh the committee, but.
I I would be happy to do that, um I would be happy to do that in view of the fact that my motion. Says that we, the the Social Services Advisory Committee, I don't feel that we can make. This, this few of us can make a decision that that has the name of everybody on it. So I'd be happy to to defer it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Is there anybody opposed to it going to the next week?
No.
I just cut and pasted Robert Rules of Order from what it states for a quorum, oh uh, oh, I believe we did not have a quorum at this time.
No, I just, I just went to three twenty nine as well, yeah. Yep.
Um. I'm wondering if we even had a quorum for the meeting and at all.
Wait, we have had members uh sign out, uh leave the meeting. Throw, it's hard to keep track. Uh anyways, uh. So Chair, well.
You know, the language, the language says, I I don't think we have to get too hung up on quorum within Robert's rules. Um the language states uh the number of members that can be reasonably expected to attend. I don't see any glaring absentees here other than the, uh well, I I don't wanna say glaring either. But other than the representative from uh mental health in the R C M P. Um and we have coins absent as well, but that has been. That coins hasn't been here for quite a number of meetings now, so you know, a reasonable expectation, I would say that. You know, having two members absent, that it it's it's not unreasonable at this point.
But Chair, was the, was there anybody opposed to deferment?
Anybody opposed to deferring this to the next meeting? Okay, so I think that's.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Um I just would like to say that I'm with Jan, I am opposed to this and I'm opposed to it because the neighborhood. Has not been consulted properly, um they filled out forms saying that they didn't want the shelter there in the first place, there were sixty six against it being there, and I think. Twenty four that were for it, and they were overridden anyhow, and now you're about to do it again, and in response to Tammy who thinks that. With the shelter, people won't be sleeping in sheds, that's already happened to some of the neighbors there, and they've not been very happy about it, when they contacted the police, they were told, well, too bad, nothing. We can do about it. Um you have a very, very unhappy neighborhood and there is, the majority of the people there are not interested in having the sh- um shelter continue. And I don't think that a com- uh so our group, Grand Fork S A G. Has the right to make um what Tammy's proposing um a reality, because the reality is, is that. This group is made up of almost everybody that's for it and only one or two of us that are trying to represent the community, and if you really want to make this. A Grand Fork Social Service Advisory Group, you really need to include more of the community, and certainly there are other. Communities in B C that recognize that having the community is part and parcel of all discussions and and. Planning works, not trying to push them out and saying they don't have a say and they have no right. And the other thing that you're not even aware of, and I am, is the fact that I know that there's a whole lot of seniors in your area up by Hardy View. That are afraid to sign the petition because they're afraid of the ramifications that might come back on them right now. Because of what's going on, so they're that afraid, so who are are truly vulnerable people here, I've reached the point that I do not. I think who the the vulnerable are, are the seniors, so they're the ones that are being harassed, they're the ones that are being hurt. And um we're, we're not looking after our vulnerable people, there is absolutely no doubt in my mind, and I'm sorry, I'm a little bit upset about this, so.
I hear what you're saying, Ann, but this uh issue and matter is going to be tabled until the next meeting. And it can be debated in full at that time, so there's no recommendation going forward to council, it's just being tabled. Okay, um there are no laid items, uh we have to go in camera.
Yeah, sorry.
So I would uh call for a motion to recess this uh meeting of. Of the say committee. And that uh we go in camera. Uh convene an in camera meeting to discuss a membership request.
I will shut off the recorder.